Chris. Let's, uh... Call the meeting to order and say pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you got everybody ready now?
No.
Do you have a list? Do you know everybody?
No, I don't. What's your name?
Jim Carter.
Jim?
That smell lighter. Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as printed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as published from last meeting.
I'd make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from last meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Franny, I know what you were doing at noon today, so... Find any discrepancies?
Um, did you get the corrections made like on the Jamborees? Okay. So that was correction there. Jamborees is 116, 71. It was, uh...
Oh, okay, I got 116.
Okay, I'm sure you know. I guess the question I was going to ask you, Chris, do we use this PMUG? Obviously, it's for billing and stuff. Are we using that service or do we need to pay dues to them?
Where's that?
On the bottom here, this PMUG.
Top of the back page.
On my...
Is that Power Manager, Tony?
Yeah, I do, so...
Yeah, yeah, we do use Power Manager, yes. And we've used them quite a bit lately because our computers have been not very friendly.
Just kind of, the way I'm reading the vestus bill, it was a, uh... I understand that I was reading it with a $22 part that cost us 25, 60, or 82. Now, it was all for two men coming down overtime and... So just, uh... You didn't slander a very big part from what I've gathered from reading their bill and like...
What was the part?
There was some communication part.
It wasn't a very big part, but like I said, it was like $22 and...
How long were they here?
They were here, uh... Actually, we paid eight hours overtime and 16 hours regular time.
Wow.
For two men.
Did they stop and report into somebody here?
Yeah, they came in and talked to us.
Okay.
They were, uh... They must charge, they charged us trip...
They charged coming...
Travel time, too.
Travel time, that's like 6 hours. Better than that.
Because they were here, yeah, most of the day.
That's on top of the...
Yeah, that was, uh...
Above and beyond maintenance.
Right after their maintenance, they came in one morning and I think they got here at like nine o'clock and left at 4:30. So then they charged us trip on top of that, too.
Then we had communication problems with it.
Why was it overtime?
Did they travel in overtime or...?
Well, I don't know where they come from. So they left that morning, got here at nine, left here and went back, so...
Probably paying after, after eight hours. Probably paying after eight.
Well, I know, but there's a lot of overtime, wasn't there? Did you see it was overtime or...?
I think it was eight hours overtime, remember it. 16 hours, $4.
Each had 12 hours a day.
At least a 12-hour day, yeah.
Okay. What's their time worth?
A hundred bucks an hour. A hundred bucks an hour regular time and it's 120 overtime, I believe it is.
Should be time and a half, shouldn't it, Franny?
Well, whatever overtime I had probably, but that's what I remember. I'd have to look it up again for sure, but I just... Just draw, just nose down, so... It's a kind of...
Then we had some more communication problems with that and I talked to him on the phone and we got that handled and I fixed that myself, so...
And you charged them for your debt? And they didn't do it right. You know, I don't kind of think I fight them, but... They obviously want our one month's worth of $200.
Yeah.
That we saved out of buying the big contract.
Any other questions for Franny on bills to be paid?
Well, I have something similar, only it doesn't have to do with the bills to be paid. But last month, the Sea Lake View charges for police protection at the, uh... At the Beer Bash Ride and it was three of them.
Yep.
For eight hours a day and they put down from seven to two.
Hundred and sixty bucks a piece, if I remember correctly.
Hundred and sixty bucks a piece. Um, their contract, how it looked like it that they could charge us 40, not 20. But the thing is, seven to two is only seven hours. They put down eight hours, which is totally incorrect. And from what I can gather, they had one person over here most of the night, um, not three.
Did you talk to Ted about that?
He told me that they had, no, I thought they had two people here, the way I understood it. And then there was one outside of town.
Patrolling?
Patrolling for drunk drivers.
I didn't know, that's what we heard.
Well, and...
I think maybe we should start dictating how many people we want for protection on things like that because that's...
I think that's a good idea, I mean...
You know, I can see two people being there. You don't want one by himself.
Well, I know they had the big wedding that night, too.
Yeah. It should be two of them.
So...
If we had just had the wedding, there wouldn't be two people here. Special duty. Special duty. There would have just been a regular protection.
So then, do you want me to call Ted and say, "We'll have..." Somebody will call you and ask you?
How many we need?
To, no, to have police services?
It's hard to tell him what he thinks, what we think is necessary and what he thinks is necessary to do.
Although we're the dictating city.
Right.
We, it depends on the function that we're having here, I guess, like Daryl said.
Two officers should be...
Like Daryl said, at that function, two officers would have been plenty. We wouldn't need no patrolling officer floating around. So I think we need to dictate to him a little bit on how many people need to be present at a certain function. And we'll have to figure out the function and stuff.
He might tell you, "Well, this is what I think is necessary. That's what we're going to have." He is the chief of police.
What does the contract actually say?
Yeah, but we, these guys were hired separately, weren't they?
Yes.
I mean, they weren't hired under our police contract, did they?
No, this is above and beyond the duty.
No, this is just extra hours, basically all this amounts. They can charge for extra hours anytime.
But was it called, was it called or... Was it called?
Not by any of the city council anymore, but I'm sure that Darren, I'm sure Darren...
Somebody called or something.
Actually, Darren didn't either.
Darren didn't call them either?
No.
They took it upon themselves to do it. They heard about it because last year they did it. Which, a couple officers I don't have a problem with, but three is overkill.
Well, I just feel the bill is totally inappropriate. So I just wanted to bring it up.
Good point, John.
It wasn't calculated right. I don't think it was even asked for. And I don't, you know, I don't know why you'd need more than one.
You gotta have two.
Why do you have to have two?
One gets in trouble, you gotta have somebody back.
You gotta have a backup.
There weren't hardly 50 people there. I was there from seven to ten.
Didn't know that, though. You know, at the time you hire them, you don't know that. Last year, they did have trouble in the beer.
But...
Last year, they needed to.
John brought up a valid point. Don't you think he should be confronted about, well, now, listen, you're turning a bill from seven to two and you're charging us from seven to three. Now, where's the 30 hours coming from?
Three hours.
Oh, three hours, yeah.
Yeah.
Or, I'm three, I'm sorry, it's three.
But I think the contract says they can charge us 40 bucks an hour and you only charge 20, so I, you know, I don't really want to go with that. You know, it was, I guess, my...
I really don't think we need to rag them.
Okay.
We just need to tell them.
But we need to tell them, you know, I think, you know, it was overprotective there in this case.
Okay. Take that under advisement for the next time that we have a...
Anyway, you know, like, if you compare it to Lakeview Beer Garden.
Three wouldn't have been enough.
Fifty-five. That's true, having that, what he's figuring on.
Okay, uh, I would entertain a motion for the bills to be paid, please.
I would move the bills to be paid.
Second.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills to be paid as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? I will await your call, Tony. Uh, old business, well water, wastewater generator.
Well, we've got quite a few things to talk about here, I guess. The, uh... This thing here is the application.
That I received Saturday in the mail. Have I had a copy of that?
You should have, in here.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so I guess, you know, we had a meeting on Friday and we were going to wait until we got the application to see what came about. There's not really much on there.
Well, there was, it was kind of a...
The IDED.
The contract with respect to this, this award will start the year of June 22nd and a successful negotiation for execution of contract between Waleke and IDED will follow short, will be following shortly. So we don't have a contract yet.
You evidently looked at this book. You tied this into there, right?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay.
I, John and I talked a little bit about the meeting on Friday, but we didn't have much time, so... You know, I guess we could go over that a little bit for John.
Yeah, what are the specifics of this? Because that's, you know, like...
Well, it's, uh... What it is, is what we turned in was four meters.
What's in this book? This tied into this?
Well, kind of.
There's a, there, this was the original version of it and this is what's... What's in the contract.
Eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, immediate.
It was part of that.
There was three options, correct? Or was there two?
Yeah, well, three phases.
Three phases.
Meters, the well and the water main. And then if you read this book, it gives you a little more info.
Right.
About most specifically, aren't.
Yeah, that one breakdown sheet. I have that in my pocket. I should be able to get it. And one where it says exactly what it's...
Yeah, this right here. It's 800, 867,000 that we, that we applied for, that MSA applied for for this.
But really only, now, 805.
And...
Going that would give them an idea what that all covers.
We asked the question about the meters. They have $209,000 in that book for meters.
And we haven't nearly done.
Yeah, we don't need to.
And $10,000 is...
Spend what's going on, you see. You were correct that we do need to follow what was on that. Now, the question becomes, do we need to spend $220,000 on meters? We don't believe that's true.
And we're $23,000 on what, sod and grass?
Yeah.
The more we save, the less we grant, we'll get.
Yeah.
More likely.
Usually. I think if you go too far away from the original application, you're going to be reapplying.
That's what he said, the gentleman that was there with Justin. But they said, in an instance like this, for instance, if we were to do not as much work on the water mains, that would probably be as easier for the not reapplication than something like the meters or like the generator.
When they call it a adjustment or something like that, you can adjust this yet.
Adjustment or amendment or something like that, yeah, something like that, yeah.
You can amend our application and take out the water mains.
Well, I know there's a lot of stuff in there.
Yeah, they specifically said $9,500 for traffic control.
And that came out of, uh... And this came out of their...
MSMA.
No, no, yeah, I know, but they came up and did a study and that's what came out of their study.
I think a lot of this has to do with seeing it as a state project, like a lot of things.
Yeah.
You have to...
Well, we have to pay union wages, it's already come across.
Yeah, we have to pay prevailing wages. I understand all that. And that was my comment the other day, you know, they give you enough money to cover those wages and you're still going to spend your own... You're still going to send your money...
You're getting enough money for a grant.
I understand that totally.
And we did look at that, too, your rehabilitation. Well, I'm not against doing that, John.
Well, I want to bring this up because it was a little more than this piece of paper. There's a lot of background getting this piece of paper because I had called Sergeant Drilling in Carroll. Thanks to Rick giving me the information. And I was up there the night we reviewed the tape and the hole in the well. And I asked him if they could just come out and, you know, jet it and pump it out. We could see what that would cost and how much it would restore the water. He said we'd get back to me. When we got back to me, he said that he had called MSA and that they wouldn't put a jetter down in there because it would, um... It would collapse the well and he'd lose all their equipment, blah, blah, blah. He was, a short conversation after that, so then I, I was talking to Thunkwist, Joe Rouschenberg. And I said, "You know anybody that still jets wells and acidizes and that kind of stuff?" And he gave me this guy's name. And so I called him up and, um... You know, asked him what he thought of the well or what he thought the first step would be. And we sent him down the tape. So when he called me back and went through the tape, I was asking him, you know, specifically where the bad spots were and what it was. And my recollection is that the hole in the well was just under the scene between the casing and the screen. I don't remember. I think it was up in like 24 feet. I'd have to look at the tape again if I didn't. But the point was, is that, I said, "Well, after looking at the tape, would you consider doing the well?" And, um, and he says, "Yeah, I'll just send you a proposal." Well, my question then is, if Sergeant Drilling was going to lose all their equipment down in the well, why weren't they concerned with losing anything? And in fact, he didn't, I don't think he found a hole in the, in the screen. He did say it's got some issues. It's all built up with lime and stuff. So, you know, once again, when I get the research done, I, I don't trust MSA anytime soon. You can put that on the tape if you want to.
Or is that...
Because if, if, Sergeant Drilling comes back with an excuse like that, and these guys don't have any problem with it, and they're even willing to, I don't know what that, he told me about that sonar jet, but that's kind of like a little blast in the well that break up all the...
Yeah, but if there's a hole in the well, what have you gained?
How do you know there's a hole in the well? He didn't find a hole in the well. Is there a hole in the well? Are you sure? Do you know there's a hole in the well?
Well, where he showed us on that tape looked to me like there was a hole in the well.
These guys didn't say there was a hole in the well. You know, it's a rock casing of it. He said there could be. There's an awful lot of lime. He said, "When you scrape it off and jet it and acidize it, you might find a hole in the well." I'm just saying, you know, we, the well we, the third well down there that we dug and pumped, we were pumping 600 gallons a minute for two days out of there. So there's plenty of water capacity. Now, what do we pump? What would we pump a minute to the tower? Like 250 or something? What is the capacity?
250.
All of the show was fine.
You know, so if the well was originally dug and it can produce 600 gallons a minute, we're only wanting to bring it back about 40%. And now it's only pumping like 50. And the guy honestly said, you know, looking at the video, he's surprised it pumps any water. It's, you know, hasn't ever been acidized. Daryl, you should be supporting this. You used to do it when you worked for the city. But we didn't have two wells real close to each other either at that time.
You can't, sure as you can't do it now.
Yeah, you can do it. He says you just shut them down for eight hours. You put it in the morning, you let it set, you pump it out. Yeah, you gotta, you can't pump for a while. If we fill our water tower, isn't it supposed to last a day? I thought that was one of the rules.
It just lasts a day now. If you read this book, it says that we have a capacity of one day. And we're supposed to have one and a half.
Well, like Saturday...
Our still grandfather didn't do one day.
That's why it's all whole.
The water tower holding 150,000, you know?
Yeah.
And Saturday, we, when I went down and read the tape, we pumped 300 that day. And we're pumping like 180, uh... Well, it varies. We pumped 180,000 and we pumped 300,000. We pumped 136,000. The next day, we pumped 170, 80,000.
Well, to do something like this, we'd have to do it in kind of September or something like that.
What was the reason for the huge day?
Oh, pool running over. Left the water turned on.
Left valve on.
Left valve turned on, pool running over again. That's why we pumped 300,000.
But normally, we pump between 130 and 170.
Between 130 and 180,000 a day.
And I think we could give, you know, the question also becomes is, what happens if it doesn't come out like we want it to and we don't get it cleaned up and we can't get water out of the other well then?
Well, I mean, that's what these guys do for a living, I can't...
I know. I believe them and I think it's worth doing. I don't think we're going to be able to do it till September. But, you know, it becomes a question of, now we fixed it like we fixed some of our electrical transformers and they're going to last us another year or two or three. At some point, we're going to have to dig a well. We're going to have to do it away from that site. You know, at some point, you know...
Probably disagree with that.
Mm-hmm.
That site isn't a very good site for a well anyway.
And if we, you know, we do have...
20 foot from the other one's...
That's bad.
$300 CD.
Well, it's the same. I don't care where you dig your well down, it's the same offer.
Well, yeah. When we go to the, if we go to clean one, we don't have to shut the other one down. Right now, we're going to shut both of them down. We're going to clean them, so...
And it'll look better if it's not in that hydro tanks right next to it.
Well, that's going to be there. Well, you want to dig two wells then so you can get away from any hydrant tanks?
Well, legally, the city should own 200 feet.
It could be a backup.
200 feet completely around that well, the city should own. And there's no way they're going to own 200 feet around those two other...
Well, I mean, you think, have you, have you contaminated your well?
No.
Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just saying, but it's, you know, it's our job to, you know, if they know what the DNR's coming, to make sure all our stuff is 300 feet away from that well to make sure that we don't get in trouble. The DNR doesn't care what we do, as long as they're 300 feet away from the well.
And they are?
And if they, if they come, they don't tell us and they're closer than that, you know, just be another ding on us, but...
Yeah, even if you're in hydro tanks that aren't leaking or anything is within 200 foot of that well, we're going to end there.
You know, correct me, because I'm really confused now. Digging another well is going to solve that? It's still going to be 200 feet from the well.
One is.
Yeah.
The backup will be.
The backup will be.
Yeah, backup well.
So what if you, I mean, we still got the same...
We've taken one step in the right direction.
We've got the same issue.
Well, we have taken one step in the right direction.
All right, all right. I think it's another one of those follies we went through last summer.
Well, none of us are opposed to going ahead and doing the jetting and stuff. That's great. We're going to do that. We also think...
We don't have a second well.
I know, I understand that. So we got to shut it down and we got to work with it. But we can't do it until our water usage is down. We do try to do it now.
No.
So, but I also think we need to go, when we do that, get our dam open, put our generator in and get that up and going. That ought to be part of it.
I totally agree with that.
And if we look at something like this, you know, as we do this in steps, the well doesn't have to be the first thing anymore.
Right.
The well can be, the well can be next year.
I'm totally in favor of a generator. I'm, I'm just saying that for that little money, if you can bring your well back into service as a second well, I think it gives you some time to make a better decision on this.
But you too. And even, you know, if we get this contract for a CDGV grant, we don't have to spend it, John. If you don't spend any money behind it, they're not going to give you the money.
Right.
But if we don't sign this contract now, one thing's for sure, we won't get the 300,000.
Or any part of it.
No. And I think we went to the citizens of Waleke to at least take that step.
Well, I think, I don't think you got your ducks in a row, but...
Well, I know that, but you, you, you made yourself perfectly clear out along with this, you know, what's going on here. And I, I understand what you're saying. I just don't totally agree with it, you know, that's just the difference between...
So out of your meeting, when did, what, at what point can, what can you pick and choose and still get part of the grant money?
That's our next step.
I mean, is it the generator or is it...
They said the easiest thing to get rid of off there would be mains.
Mains and fire hydrants?
Fire hydrants.
We need to, we need to do meters. That's something that, you know, that's like our electric meters. They need to be done. And because we're only billing half of the water, but how did I know?
Well, I think at one point, we had the meters half paid by the I-Jobs money or something, not the installation, but just the meters. And that, didn't that come through at one point here, years ago or a couple of years ago?
No, I think the I-Jobs being involved with this. Isn't I-Jobs a loan?
No, they, they had an application for some I-Jobs money for the, it was a, I don't remember, 100,000 or something. And then they got denied and we ended up, they would have paid...
Well, this was, no, our CDGV grant got denied at first.
Yeah.
Then they came back second round and they, and they granted it to us. But they, you know, I mean, you can, they got ways of, you know, you lending or borrowing money. They're trying to steer you this way and this way, you know, and they keep telling you, "It only costs you..." Each person that is using it, $3. Each person that's using it, $2, $5, you know, well, you start adding that up and that's quite a bit of money. I understand that. You know, I would, I would rather see us do something different than try to get their loans like they want us to.
All right, then let me ask another question. How do you prioritize this with all the other things that we have going on? You know, we have Traders, five acres that we might develop. We have a substation that probably needs some upgrading. We have some distribution lines that need to be repelled. I mean, we've got, have...
I agree.
If you look at...
You look at, we have, we have orange lines running through our town that will not support fire, according to studies. You know, totally support it all the way through the town. So that's a priority that we need to look at, too. So, you know, I mean, yeah, we need to sit down and look at it. Our, our cheap living for the last 25 years is catching up with us. And it's great that we got to live cheaply. But now it's, you know, it's like the school up here. We didn't invest any money in our school for 50 years and now we have a 60-year-old building that we can't get in the mix when we're talking about, when we start talking about consolidation. We're on the, the end of the rope that's going to go first. You know, I mean, that's, that's the way I see it as a city councilman. We have people coming in to all this, "We need electric, we need electrical lines. We need transformers. We need..." You know, every, one of our entities except for natural gas, which we put in new seven years ago, the rest of them are aging rapidly. But our water issue is one that, you know, has been bugging us and it's going to end up bugging us down in the ponds, too, isn't it?
That sewer?
Yeah.
Well, that's a different approach.
Well, I know, but...
I mean, Ed, he would have built two more lagoons.
But, you know, I think that... But, you know, I, I think that, I think that we need to solve the amount of water running into it.
Well, you can, I, I, honestly, you could build two more lagoons. You wouldn't get a black star or gold star, DNR wouldn't even care. You know, they don't care how much water you can hold, they want you to separate it before it ever gets there. You know, they, you can hold 10 million gallons more and they're not gonna care. You're still gonna have the same problem with DNR. They don't want the groundwater or the rainwater in the sewer, period. So, till you do that, you waste some money on that. I kinda see this well project as something I'd like to know what DNR specifically said. I see the water tower, they wanna build a $200,000 tank. Well, maybe there's a bigger issue with the water than.
I agree.
How much you pumping up there. Uh, are we losing water? Have we ever, have we ever had somebody come over and test our systems?
We won't know that until we get our meters in.
We don't know what, we don't know what's going through our meters because we can't trust them.
So then maybe that should be our A priority, to get the meters done.
True, I agree.
Maybe build, drill a well or new water tower, the rest of that.
I'm.
Maybe the water mains.
Water towers.
Maybe the water mains are bigger issues than the, anything else.
If you want to meet a prioritization, I would say that it would be the water meters and then add the generator together.
Well, yeah.
Are the two biggest things that we need to take care of out of this.
I totally agree, 100% with you.
And then after that, we can look at.
Rick, Mark, do you, do you know, are we losing water anywhere that you know of?
Well, we've been asking this question for a year.
We pump more than what we should.
Yeah.
For a town this size.
But then, you know, those, those two, and then we, at some point, we are gonna have to put in a well.
And then from up there in Traders Edition, they said that there's straight water running into the line, in the sewer line.
Kenny, Kenny Show, he saw this camera running in there, we haven't done anything about
Well, it's coming from, I don't know, coming from water main or it's coming from.
Why can't you tell that? You can't remember it.
You know, you just said one of the things you take off as a water main, but maybe that should be the answer.
Water coming out of the.
Probably going in.
Lift station.
We might not know that till we get the meters done.
Should be.
You're right.
And this can be a.
Generator is probably the most important anyway.
Yep. So we get a generator put in, then we replace water meters, then we'll be in winter. You know, how long is this project gonna take? I don't know.
So my $7,700 suggestion was to not spend it on the well just yet.
I agree.
But we don't have a second well. We don't have a second well, do we?
Alright.
At least get us a second well, in case something happened to the other pump or.
I, I'll make a motion that we rehabilitate our well with this, with this estimate.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded that we rehabilitate this. My pardon?
September or October, whenever the, I mean, we've gone this far without us. You said it when they pumping the well, right? Last meeting, didn't you say that?
There's pumping.
There's pumping there, but I only pumped like 70, 80 gallons a minute.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought the pump.
Been moved and seconded to rehabilitate, rehabilitate.
One question, is that just the one well or are we doing both of them?
We just did the other one.
Okay.
Didn't we just jet the other one? Three months ago.
Not very long ago.
Rick, when would we jet that other well? Well, three.
Well, three.
Four months ago.
Yeah.
Last summer?
Yeah. Was it last summer?
It's been a long time.
Well, this time last year.
About here.
Okay.
So you're talking about doing.
If we found out the other one, we could pump water.
What are we doing?
Talking about it?
Oh, we're, we're talking air at 150, 50 gallons a minute, we're up to almost 400.
Yeah, 380.
380 now, after we, after they get it and clean it.
I guess my point being is if we're gonna do the one well, we're gonna be shut down anyway. Why don't we just look at that second one to make sure that we.
Oh, do this.
Well, I don't think we can do them both the same day because we need to get back on the running.
Well, I mean, it doesn't really matter. If they can do it the timeframe, they can work it at, at eight hours, that'd be, you know, that'd be a ticket, but if they can't, then that's, we don't wanna do that. But I think if you're doing one, it wouldn't be in, in more.
It'd be advantageous.
This thing says they're gonna bring a two-man crew up.
Yeah.
They're gonna do the, well, they're gonna pull the well, they're gonna do it for the pump, they're gonna do the well, they're gonna check the pump, they're gonna fix it if it needs anything fixed, they're gonna clean it, they're gonna put it back in. So they would probably need a four-man crew to do that.
What outfit is this?
Ten quid.
Lane, Lane.
Out of Drines.
I think they're actually out of Omaha. Drines is what this.
Yeah, to me, something like this, this would give us more time so the well doesn't have to be number one.
Yeah.
But we can still work on it. I still think that needs to be in the fingers.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think the well should be thrown out, okay?
Okay. And it gives us more time to, yeah, to look, work on it, you know, I mean, I think, you know, and we told him the other day that $200,000 for meters, we thought that was really too high, you know?
Well, if the well feeds in, you know, we just piss the waste effort and go.
Not necessarily, not necessarily. You've learned one lesson, that it wasn't worth, that we found out that it, the well is shot. At least we found out.
But then we're $8,000, oh-oh.
I know, but then, but then you gotta call down the dirt on telling they were right.
Yeah.
You gotta call, John.
I would also have to call MSA.
What time will we lose this ramp then?
Okay.
Not about the spit thing, I wanna be there.
In no, no, we're done, right, then we're gonna look at throwing away this chance and give the 300,000.
No, 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 no. Yes.
Not at all. I think it just gives us a game, we can prioritize differently.
Breathing room.
In that.
Is there a deadline on this as far as completion of the project?
We don't, we haven't, no, we haven't found one yet, have we, Chris?
No.
Well, it says, it says. And it says, if the contract is not fully executed by September 30th, 2011, this award of funds shall be rescinded.
So we're already a month late.
Mm-hmm.
And we started June 22nd.
Yeah, September 3rd is 2011.
We're only about two weeks late right now, Rob.
No, I believe.
You gotta decide about.
We just got this.
Yeah.
Conditions contained as other.
I received that Saturday.
Well, look, it said, look at the top, it says June 28th. They probably meant July 22nd. I would, I mean, I would have to guess.
Well, we've got a motion on the table that either has to be voted on or rescinded. I got a motion and a second to rehabilitate well number two. According to proposal sent, that John received. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay. You need to jump on that one right away, Chris, tomorrow and get ahold of them and say, when can you do it? We would prefer, what, September is correct? Is that our, is that our, is that our slow?
We should listen to Rick on that and find out.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking him right now.
Let's start slow down.
Yeah, September's.
Well, September would be too late to have any, any other way to do it. You can't put it in the other one.
Yeah.
If it don't work, we're just screwed. They see what I'm on, take the September.
Way too long, huh?
If you wanna grant. I don't care if we do it all out of pocket, matters nothing to me.
Well, I'm not suggesting.
But you still gotta be part of the grant.
Still go ahead and get the grant and go ahead.
This can be by September 11th.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I said, if we're gonna go ahead, you're gonna.
And you can still apply for the grant, but if it isn't executed by September 11th.
September, yeah.
Then we lose out completely on the grant.
Well, we lose out in that portion of it, or whatever we don't do.
Did you see September 11th?
September 30th.
30th.
September 30th.
30th.
A 30th, excuse me.
21, yeah.
And I guess that's, Chris needs to get on the phone and talk to them.
And I'll go.
And say, well, you know, we were, number one, we were supposed to have start date of June 22nd and you just gave us a letter here July 11th. And now you want us to be done by September 30th and we don't have time to have public hearings for that.
August, just before.
I just received that because I brought it down right away.
Sure, I know.
After I got it Saturday.
Well, I think what happens is, you know, we, we applied for this back in October, I believe, right? So this is probably that letter.
We're in the second round of it though.
Yes.
Well, yeah, they had extra money left, so.
You know, that's why I think you need to talk to them, get some new dates.
We've been doing it for a year.
What's that?
You know, they hold us.
Well, this is just to sign the contract, not to do the work. Isn't that just the contract?
That's the way I read it too.
Okay.
That's the way I read it.
They're not gonna give you until September to get this project. I don't, that's just to agree to this.
The contract is fully executed means we'll have the contract.
Well, right, I, you know, this is coming through HUD and they're, fiscally, you're in for the federal government on September 30th. And so they're gonna have.
So they have to know where the money's going.
That this is appropriated this year.
And we've got three months.
I'll still.
Help check on that and make sure.
We got three months to get a plan together.
Don't mark up on that too.
At least we can, we're not, we're not tossing this out the window at this point. We know the citizens don't like the chance of 300,000.
No. Well, maybe.
I just wouldn't mark up on that. That's what, that's what Rob is saying, exactly right. We can accept it.
Oh, really?
But you don't, they have to use it.
Right. They just need to know that it's, it's in the making, it's in the works.
It's all different than the other grant people. You ask for it, you get it, and then you throw it back at them, they don't like it much.
Okay. Are we all done with the well water?
Really, you can do that the same way without.
Yeah.
It's my personal opinion.
Okay, let's move on to the pool boiler. And, uh, Rick, will you give us an update that it's been ordered, or maybe Chris can? Who do you want, who do you want to give the update?
Yeah, I update, I ordered it.
I know it's ordered. Uh, the way I understand it, I talked to Mr. Lawler and I don't mean to be stepping on anybody's toes if I am.
That's fine with me.
Uh, the boiler is supposed to be here the end of this week, the way I understand it from Mike Lawler. He's hoping with help from the city and what have you, to pour the concrete and possible installation by the 19th, if I'm correct, Rick?
We have the, we've got a whole boiler well throughout the day and all piping and watering that isn't needed, it's all ready, we got.
Why didn't you call me? I wanted to come up and see that historic day.
What concrete?
To pour.
We gotta add a little bit on the.
To the, uh, to the west.
Yeah.
Two foot?
So not a lot of concrete.
No.
Two foot by, you know, something. Which one do we go with? Which boiler?
It's, it's the very top one, Franny. That's kinda what I wanted to tell you. It's the, it's the 5300 plus the 20. But, but what I told Mike was, is, you know, we need to keep it, everything under $7,000. So, work with us on the price here and Mike's.
We got the $6,000 one, go with that.
Yeah, Mike's more than willing to work with us on the price, so, uh, we're going over the $7,000.
That's kinda what he conveyed to both of us, didn't he, Rick?
Yeah.
I thought he was gonna be able to take Jake back into.
Yeah.
He was gonna. No, no, it's just, well, we're gonna go get, get the work.
Okay, any other questions on the pool boiler? Let's move on to new business, city clerk's report.
Before we get to that, I will tell you guys that you're a, you're a big hit with all the kids in town, since you did that, trust me.
The boiler?
Yeah, I went down.
You just can't imagine how big of a deal that is.
I was down running the pool since Robin was on vacation. And Dawn Potop stopped me, she said, Steve, she said, I know you weren't at the meeting that night, but she said, how did the boiler issue turn out? And I said, the way I understand it, the pool boiler was passed and it will be installed forthcoming. I almost got a standing ovation.
It's gotta be warming up a little bit though, doesn't it?
I guess we're all running the pool.
Well, that, that got it cold again, cause my, my kids were down there Sunday and they came back within an hour and said, what's the deal? And they said, the water's cold, so.
Okay, let's move on to the city clerk's report, please.
Yeah, John and I finished this bad boy up today. We've been having some computer issues and Tony's doing a wonderful job, but since Michelle left, things have been kinda hairy. We're learning as we go, so you guys are gonna have to bear with us for a while, please. Um, I don't really have anything to say necessarily about it, other than, uh, if you look at the, um, well, first of all, probably the debt service and the tax increment. Um, we got those right about zero, what we wanted to do last.
Debt service must've been some taxes that came in.
Yeah.
Do you need a calculating there? Cause we got a little balance left. It's gonna carry over to the next year anyway.
Something I noticed is they're all 630, except for electrical bills, which is 711.
That one should be 630, we reprinted it. Does it got zeros on it for this?
Yeah, zeros.
That one, do you have another electrical?
No, that's the one I was.
I didn't get yours in there, Ray, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we had to read print that one.
Mine said 711.
Yeah, we had a, the report didn't exactly balance out where we printed, we had an account number missing off electric, so we added that add in, it was, uh.
Which one is that?
If I can tell you what it was, it was the positive refund, we had an account positive refund of 100,000.
Which, which?
A hundred dollars.
Okay.
For what?
Uh, the general fund is still 53,000 in a hole after we made those transfers. I, I know that this is gonna end up on a state, state report. We'll probably get something back on how we're gonna handle that. How good, learning experience for Chris.
Yeah, another one. I, uh, you know, if you guys wanna look at the natural gas fund, that's something that's been talked about the last couple of meetings. That got caught up, and we actually made some money.
Well, that was two months of WIE. Yeah, it's a lotta.
Their, uh, their new guy, I guess, we're calling, didn't pay on the same time as what Joe did, so just got messed up.
Transmission charges and ending due balance.
What do we get on, what do we add in the transmission charges, 15 cents a term?
As much as they are.
As much as the transmission charges, you know.
Well, I'm not, okay, I know outside of WIE, but I mean, for local, anything under a certain amount?
Yeah, anything under 20,000.
Is it, is it 30 cents we have there? And we're charging what roughly?
Seventy some cents?
$1,000. $1,000. $1.09. Where's that at, Rob?
Yeah, I was gonna look at some of that.
Still, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, every year at this time, we say, well, we've got all this other stuff, but the transmission charges are $86,000. The net income's only 50,000. Where's the rest of the money?
So just kinda look through here and see which ones are bigger than, I see the operating supplies is quite a bit larger than budget, and that's, you know, like you said, with the supplies.
I think part of the problem too with the natural gas fund, guys, is WIE started up in May, April, somewhere in there. Otherwise, they hadn't run for most of the year. And that's a huge deal. I mean, look at the budget, we budgeted 1.5 million and we came in at 722,000, so.
That's something you may not be able to count on either.
Yeah.
We better praise ourselves, but I mean, I.
What, WIE?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been told they should be good for another year, but, you know, how do you know?
Yeah, depends on what Obama does here on this tax ceiling debt bullshit. Any other questions for Chris?
We only lost $4,000 in garbage, huh?
Yeah, I thought that was pretty good.
You ain't kidding.
Well, I, I know that we could tweak this report a little if you so desired, because, like I said last week, we put all the insurance under the general fund. We wanted to move some of that out with the other funds, because we have the electric and gas insurance and everything else. Could possibly use the same allocation of last year, that would sell it out. But overall, it's gonna help to get 50,000 over.
Yeah.
Or we could just leave it and next year, try to work out the deficit.
I think you should just leave it, because how do you tweak it between, to put it to the general fund or the, uh, electric fund or something?
Well, the, all the, uh, insurance.
There was a, that's what I'm saying, $90,000 worth of insurance.
I don't know if you could tweak it, did you say, okay, we're gonna charge the electric fund so much on the insurance part of it?
You look at policy, usually pro-rata based on the coverage. So if electric plants covered for a million dollars, building the half of it, you know, and you could pro-rata that. But, and then the 50,000 that we paid for the land up there is off of this general fund too, so.
33? Maybe I do a look at that.
It would go anyway, stay there probably.
I don't know. Any other questions for Chris?
I'd make the motion, did you get the cash balances balanced? All of it, you guys still working on that?
Oh, you mean the.
Yeah, did you get all the reconciliation down?
No, I'm still working on that, yes.
So this might not be our final, final yet. All right, we don't have to accept it tonight.
Nope, all this is a clerk's report, because I won't take a motion on it anyway.
Oh.
Okay. Question? Anybody have questions for Rick, or for, uh, Chris? Okay, up next, Mark, and your transformers.
Okay. I think we're need to have some backup transformers for that different voltage we got south town. And we brought it up before, and I got some prices, and I think you guys got cheap on TNR electric. And I think we need a couple 25s, 150s, 100s, uh, we 2200 and 50 bucks. When that one transformer blew up on us, when that lid blew off.
It's all white.
We had to scramble.
Kosher.
Yeah, and that transformer, I think, was 1,400 bucks. We got it here in about a day and a half, two days. But if, you know, I copped the grain, had a problem again, or something like that, and they were drying, we'd be difficult. We don't have any backup transformers.
Such as October, the month October.
Yeah, we don't have any backup transformers for our 72125, so we do for our old voltage, but.
So you're saying you want, is it 25 KVA, the 50 and the 100?
Yeah, 225, 150 and 100, they just have on backup.
So you gotta multiply each of these by two then, Mark?
No, no, no. Their total would be, I think, 2500 and 50 bucks.
Yeah, 2550.
So you're looking at $400 for two 25 KVA's?
800 for two 25, 650 for a 50 and 1145 for a 100.
We have no idea what's, what's the problem up there, we don't have a crack to it, but copped the grain, caused that one to?
No, we don't.
You kind of thought it got hit by lightning.
Yeah, got hit by lightning and weakened it, and threw a fuse in and blew two, threw another fuse in and blew the lid off and made a ball fire come back at me and oil and trying to, you know, isolate what's probably what's happening.
Have you got witnesses on this, or can you have anybody to test? Because I was out there and seen all, all over, all over the place.
I got a picture of what it looks like when the transformer lid blew off, it's pretty scary.
From my point of view, it was really cool looking.
Which, which part? Which part, when, when Dederman's hair was standing on end or what?
I was shaking and Ricky was shaking, he was on the ground.
What's your bad note?
7200 at the substation. You know, we talked about when we did that project, having a backup for that, and I threw that in there for a cost for you guys to kinda look it over and think. And when I talked to that guy at TNR electric, he said, well, you don't have a tendency for your pad mounts to go bad as often as you do your pole mounts, because your pole mounts are up in the lightning and stuff. Your pad mount sometimes is bad. But I threw that in there because we were talking.
This is the one for the substation, right, Mark?
This is the substation?
Yes, yeah.
That runs all the halletts and CPS and all that.
This is in the 3 million in the substation, this is outside the.
This is the one in the.
Yeah, that runs 20 acres and all that 45 stuff.
I'm gonna do some more. No, that's a back page here.
Yeah, that's that second page for.
The one we put in there was brand new when we bought it.
Yep.
I thought about this one being ready long.
But that one that blew up on you a year and a half.
Bear with us, Ray, please.
Have we ever got anywhere with, uh, transform for inside the substation? What did they step down or?
Yeah, John and I, we talked about that and I had got your price, and I think, what was it, 30 or 40,000?
Yeah, I think you did hand me his flip paper on that.
And that was used?
I think, yeah, I think it was rebuilt. I think it was 36.
Reconditioned.
34, 36, something like that.
What did that one cost when we had it rebuilt? Do you remember?
Oh.
I got 40 stuck in my head, but I could be all.
What was it?
No, not quite.
What was it, 10,000, something like that?
No.
I never saw them built on that, or that one. But they just shipped it up there and moved some stuff around and repaired it.
Dropped the oil in it and, and, and redid the, uh, the paper in the inside.
And moved some connections out.
Right.
Connections removed.
Right, because they thought the coils inside had sparked and arced across of the paper, is what they did. That's what they thought, and they retightened all the coils on, on the inside.
And the connections.
And then, yeah, the connections, and then they repapered the complete inside.
And put oil on it.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna tell you the price, because I don't remember, I don't have.
I don't remember what it was. But I had TNR do some more tests on the other two transformers, and there's high hydrogen in one of them, which means that there could be a failure right about, and it could be arching. So in two more nights, we're gonna retest that. So we don't know where we're at with that, see if that hydrogen lasts.
How long would it take you to get a re, for a rebuild?
Put like with the sub?
With the sub? I mean, if we ordered it today, are you looking?
I thought they said like four to six weeks, didn't they tell us?
They say, this says, this says four to five weeks right here on the 15,000.
Four to five weeks for that 1,500?
Yeah, that's a different one.
That's different.
That's right.
But that's just that lower one, that's what the substation has.
But I thought they told us four to six weeks, when you and I were talking that day, I thought they said four to six weeks that we could have a reconditioned one.
Well, I, I can call up the, what a 16, 16, 17 would take for lead time to get there.
And the cost.
And the cost, yeah.
I would get a cost.
Yeah, I think we need a backup off there.
Especially if you talk, and we got another one that's.
Yeah, especially if we got another one that's starting to have high level of hydrogen and methane and running on.
I'm more concerned about them than the other one, aren't I?
Yeah. We could have it sitting there, and I got diagrams to where, say, if this one went bad and had a spare here, oh, I just hooked this one up to the 69,000 and a 2,400, the same as this other one, and it would still be.
We wouldn't have as much downtime as, as what we had the last time we had this.
You just have one hook up time, right?
Right.
Yeah, we just have, and hook the bad transformer, hook up to the reconditioned one that we got for a spare, and then we'd have downtime again, and we'd have to take that bad one out and get repaired and, and downtime again to get it replaced.
But that would be minimal compared to what we had.
Be minimal if we was taking four to six to eight weeks lead time.
You're saying we can go up there and possibly set the other one off to the side, hook it in, and pull the old one out after that?
You know, we got a chunk of concrete out to the side of those three, and when we built the sub and designed it, that's why they poured that actual concrete for the fourth transformer for a backup, and that never happened.
The, the reason you would have minimal downtime, Franny, is because if the, if the third one was there, okay, and.
Fourth, fourth.
Or the fourth one, yeah. What we would have there is, we'd still have to shut down our power, because when he had to move it, he had to come through several jumps at a time. But once that last jump was made, the power could be thrown back on, because it would be switched over to the other, to our backup right away. So that, that, well, we had an extra four hours downtime. By the time we jumped everything across, then we had to re-hook back into the other two, we only had two then.
We had to go from three to two, and we had to rewire the whole sub.
That's correct.
On the high side and low side.
That's correct.
Well, if you got four of them here, and say, these protectors two hours go here, and these protectors two hours go there, and this is a spare over here, well, you just take these wires, hook into the same as this bad one, and you probably would be down maybe over a couple hours.
We figured four at the most, didn't we?
Yeah.
Because, because we figured while they're taking the transformer out, somebody else could be hooking those wires that were on that transformer over to the other transformer.
We had the whole transformer really wasn't even handled, take that out at that time. We could go from the bad transformer, hook to our backup, and, you know, it's gonna take it all just to balance.
Yep, yep.
Because we got a balance and everything out there.
Yep.
And so you just transform, transform the wires from this transformer to the good one, and move it down the bus, the wires that are going across.
Now, when you pull off the bad one, do you have to turn it off?
Yes, yes.
Just like we did before.
And the reason you have to do that is because he can't, he can't hook and pull it clear up and move it clear out. He's gotta drop and hook and drop and hook and drop and hook, and you hit those wires that are going across.
You know, you can't go in there with a crane, $69 volt in there.
Nope, nope.
And try to pick it up with steel cable, try to move it. It just doesn't work.
And we won't do it on the Tuesday afternoon.
That's right.
I think you ought to look into that, I think we ought to.
Have a price on that against the.
As far as this stuff is concerned, what do you think? Should we look at the pole mount one?
Look at those.
The pole mount one, yeah.
I just, those four, all right.
I'll make the motion, go ahead with the, uh, 225s, 150 KVA, 100 KVA for total of four.
Second?
All seconded.
Total of four, Franny, or five?
Four.
Four.
225, 150 and 100.
Oh, okay. Been moved in second inch, that we purchased 225 KVA's, 150 KVA, and 1100 KVA at the, uh, published prices. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? We'll have to tell.
Did they happen to talk about the life expectancy of the, uh, the 1,500?
I can ask him too.
That might be something down the road.
Right.
Bringing it up every six months.
Ray, who made that motion?
Because, you know, when we did do our, that project out south, we had trouble. Transformer getting water wrong and water wrong, and then when they threw it in out south, you know, blew the doors off. So that couldn't have a tendency, I'm not saying they did, but could have tendency to make that transformer a little weaker, because we're getting such surges on it. So that's just something for you guys to think about, kick around.
What's the timeline on trying, this says four to five weeks, but if you needed one, is, are they available out there, or is this another one of those 24 to 12, it's hard to find?
Um, tall fours, well, yeah, $1,000. I can ask him on availability.
Yeah, if you absolutely needed one, if it's, you know, four weeks or five weeks even, then it makes a lot more sense to get one. If it's only a day or two, it's probably easier buy.
Yeah.
Now, can you wire two of those together like you did the other one, or not?
No, because they're just a three-phase, the whole unit is three-phase. We'd have to pull that out, have another one on the pad and plug the primaries in.
Do you wanna wait, Mark, with what you and I and Rick talked about, those poles out there? Do we wanna wait at a later date and tell them what we have up our sleeve and what we wanna do with those poles?
Need for other?
Move them to the pole, to the wall, closer, so they can make it accessible?
Yeah, let's talk about that later.
All right. I didn't know if you wanted to bring that up yet or not. Okay, uh, street costs. Thanks, Mark, very much.
Okay, yeah, you got it.
Well, I talked to Dean Stock, and he said that the county wasn't gonna do anything until fall, uh, but I should call, uh, Mike Riddell. So I called Mike Riddell, talked to him, and, um, he didn't really tell me too much, and then, well, actually, he told me to call, uh, Ron Hayden, who's the engineer. So I called those guys. Ron Hayden told me that, uh, the county's gonna do some tear out and patch, uh, which isn't really anything that we wanna do. Um, so as far as us piggybacking on with the county, that's probably not gonna work. Now, um, I did talk to Ron about concrete versus asphalt, and, uh, what he told me was that concrete is probably the better way to go. Uh, asphalt's getting high enough to where it's comparable in cost to concrete. So then I called, uh, Goberson Smith to talk to Mark Fryer, see if he could come over here and get us some costs, and that's as far as I've gotten with that. He hasn't, he hasn't come over here to look at what we wanna do, so, uh.
Do we have specific streets that we have in mind?
Yeah, we do have specific streets, and, and Rick measured them all out, um, but I guess I should, you know, ask a couple of questions. You guys, you guys don't wanna lay anything over, that's kinda what I got. More, more would rather grind it down, get it out of there and.
You'll probably have to do concrete.
Definitely grind it out, do concrete. Probably what we have with laying it over the top again is, some of these streets were already pretty, we're way over halfway up in the curb already, you know? That's what we're trying to avoid.
That the manhole covers.
driveway, then it's broke out, then you got hold your mounts and all that. So I guess we wanna look at all the options we could possibly do, I mean, on streets we could possibly do a little, where, where seal coat, if we can get by that way, that's what we'll do, but.
I, you know, I talked to Ida Gro, and they used, I don't know, he sent me the letter and I didn't bring it, because I totally forgot about it. They were using some kinda red, uh, seal coat, rotten red rock, seal coat, that sounded like it's lasting a good old.
That's what they did out west of town, you keep following that county road, it's an Ida County.
Yeah, oh, they did out there.
Doesn't look too bad, really.
Well, they've been pretty happy.
Makes their road look red, but.
Yeah, I think it's some kinda red rock or something. And he gave me the person contact that just, I just kinda did.
I think you need to bring them back to us.
If you're gonna seal coat, that's probably the way to go.
Yeah.
Not as dusty as the white.
The streets that you're interested in doing?
Yeah.
How much are you interested in doing?
As far as couple of streets, I don't think seal coat's gonna help it.
Well, no, not open, but.
No, but the west side of town, east side of town.
Yeah, the east side of town.
Like, do you decide we put in new streets?
I knew that was gonna come up.
I can tell you what streets we're looking, what we measured anyway. Uh, the street up by Dave King, um, and I don't know what the.
That's Melrose?
Know the other way.
Yeah, the one going next one.
Yeah, it's really, it's really short, uh, and then the one by Darrell, that whole block, and then, uh, the one, yep.
The driveway, that one.
The driveway too, while we're at it?
Now, you're looking at seal coat, are you looking at taking the street out?
No, I was looking at taking the street out. At least that's the questions that I've asked right now. At the last meeting, we kinda discussed that seal coat wasn't something that we wanted to do. Now, I can check on that if you want me to. I can check on this red rock.
Streets we could seal coat versus tear them out.
Your street that bad, Darrell?
North side of town.
We was gonna do it when we did this.
We busted bank.
But I said, ah, we don't.
That was the third one that I was gonna get to, we got kinda off. That goes from, from here all the way up.
Yeah.
When we did the south side playground.
And, and.
We're gonna do that back.
One crossing the hotel there.
We're gonna do mine then, and I said, ah, we don't need it.
See, my college got it.
There's not much traffic, but there is.
How much of the.
Which way is crossing? Coming down hill or.
To the east, to the east, to the south?
No, west, uh, on the north side, that's all.
A wood street?
On, right across from the old hotel there.
Now, that gets so much water.
Up here?
Tear that out, put cement.
Oh, up by the fire, fire department out there?
Yeah, right past the fire department.
Yeah, that always, that always has got a chuck hole or two or three there.
That whole corner could stand to be cement.
Yeah, yeah.
These were short ways. Traffic all sad, comes up and forgets the fire station, they're just, they're mixing and putting cement.
Well, I, I would say a good fifty foot of that whole corner.
Oh, yeah. See, the county, the county's got a road there, but then.
County's road, but.
But, but we got the, how much of it's.
State.
Yeah.
Cause we seal coated, none of that red stuff didn't create as much dust, cause when I tell you what, that was dusted out and you seal coated over in front of my house for a while there.
That's with that pea gravel and, uh, tar?
It couldn't vibrate fast there. Yeah, it was dusty for a while.
Okay, so get us some street costs and see when Mark, Mark Fryer can get us.
But there was an awful lot of talk going on there, so I don't know, I don't know what to bring you guys.
Is he planning on, I mean, curb and everything or just between the curbs?
I would think just between the curbs, wouldn't you guys?
Yeah.
Heads on the shape of.
I don't know what kind of machine he'll bring in.
You know, I guess if we're talking about, this is way back into where we started before, but if we're gonna do any goddamn water mains.
That's the time to do it there, you know?
I think those might be.
Those, if we take a good hard look at it when we.
Look at that little thing, which ones are that you wanted to connect together?
Now, it was down main and, main and, uh.
That adventure to say up in your neighborhood is where, so we got. Yep. Everybody ill grodees and.
Cause he runs out of water, I can't believe that.
It says here a main street water main, it says a third street water main, fourth street water main.
Third street, that's gotta be back over here.
Fourth will be there.
Next one?
Cause where we have, all we have is these four inches running here. Nope, now we got.
Third street, is that to my north corner? Or is that fourth street? Randy Bar, we're Randy Bar, on the north side here, that's third street.
We did it.
No, no, that's fourth street.
Your north end is.
Fourth street, okay, that's what I'm getting, yeah, okay.
My south road is third street.
Yeah, he coming off a second, there's a four inch there. He goes to first.
Yeah, I would say curb to curb, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think we need to do anything more than curb to curb.
I think what he wants to do is extend this.
And see if Mark can kind of show up at our next meeting.
Third street, it's possible.
I know where he is.
He'd be foolish.
I just want to get some more information, there's still been a lot of chatter.
That's fine.
They're checking on mains and stuff, I know that, that they're talking about that over there.
Having six inches over here at all.
Well, if Leo runs out of water, then John's almost gotta run out of water.
No, he's over closer, we don't.
Leo's got a two inch that feeds him.
On the west north side, there's water, uh, hydrant and everything there, so he'll fit that way, I'm sure.
From the other side?
When I lived there, I never had a couple of water.
Yep.
I never really noticed. I never noticed that mine.
No.
It's that we never. You just shower at different times of kids.
Well, there's a four inch that Steve chose for him.
Shower?
But the east and west between.
That's small.
That's a two inch gone by my place.
Neither one of those streets have any water mains on them.
Other side, there's a first.
First avenue and second street.
Yeah, I'm using it all, you don't have to.
So I use those streets, but there's a blue one.
So you're a two inch to your house?
But then, what's that over here?
Well, Leo's like.
Four inch on the other.
Four inch going down.
They have to, they have two people on it.
I was gonna say, I think they would be, but.
How can Leo run out and you don't?
I don't know if Leo's. I think that was the grand.
Yeah.
True. Maybe it's lead. Could've just flushed down the line or something.
Okay, which you want to add?
So, yeah, okay, on street costs then, I'm gonna, I'm gonna figure out what streets we, we need to have done. Sounds like the three that we talked about and maybe the corner down here by the fire department, would be the only one to add to that.
I think, I think that should be on there.
Definitely that one here.
Cover some of that cost.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we'd have to check that, how much is that?
So he did on it.
You know, and what John and I were just talking about, is you look at main street. Yeah, in front of your store.
Well, we, we would go by the front of your store.
Just to seal coat.
Cause I, I didn't get to say that one, that's the third one that we're talking about, the bank.
If you're gonna do that, rebuild that bottom manhole to where that's.
That's where it's supposed to be.
Where it's supposed to be. Because that's the only reason that breaks up down there on the bottom by the bank is cause that manhole is low.
Tunnel.
The water sits down in there.
The water runs into it too when you.
Yeah, a lot of water goes into it.
That's for the force down about four inches or.
Yeah.
Well, that's where all that snow builds up.
So then, uh, we're just gonna go between the curbs. And I'm gonna look at seal coating with red rock. Who did you say did that, John?
I'll give him, I, he sent me a letter, I didn't, actually, I'm gonna have to open it, yeah.
We're gonna have to do east side of town for a second.
They, they was from Ida Grove and they were, they seemed to be really happy with it, so I said, send me a letter, I'll tell you who did it.
I wrote your name down, so I'll be calling that.
Real sold on it.
So, yeah, other than that, that's what I got for street cost.
Okay.
It's a start.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one thing about being on the bank is that was, that's a weird.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to natural gas costs.
Okay. If you guys get your information out there, um, looks like that sheet that Franny's got. This one here and this, and this one here, yep, the one that Ray just put down, there you go. Okay. First of all, we'll just say that if you guys look at this, it's just really confusing. I mean, they've got all kinds of, of things that they charge us for and, uh.
We never have had it broken down.
Not much of gas we don't look.
No.
And I think, I think probably the reason why you haven't is because if, I mean, if you look at this, it's, it's, I mean, it's just ridiculously confusing how they charge you. Well, the first, the first, uh, up in the top left-hand corner there, you can see demand cost. This is something that we're gonna get charged whether or not we use any gas. It's just like electricity, you need this much electricity, you need this much gas, this is what you're gonna get charged. Um, I will tell you that in the middle there, Clayton, uh, Bill Lindley, charges us seven hundred and fifty dollars a month for his service. Uh, and that, that's been that way for ten years, he told me, that's, that's never changed.
I think we had a contract with them for purchasing gas or something.
Yeah, right.
Back to day one.
Yeah, which is quite a few communities he's got.
He, uh, he has four hundred in some communities that he does this for and he's told me, cause he, when I started asking all these questions, he got worried, he thought we were gonna try to do this ourself. And he told me that he had a couple of them do that and they did it for a couple of months and then they came back. Uh, and one of the reasons is, is if you, if you don't, if you don't use up exactly what you buy every month within a certain variable and it's very small. Uh, you get penalized for it and we still get penalized because he doesn't do exactly. He don't, we don't use exactly what he buys every day, but it's, it's in the ten dollar range. Monthly as compared to the hundred or thousand dollar range if we did it, is what he told me anyway. So, uh, I mean, you guys can ask me some questions on these costs, but, um, at the top there, it's demand cost. That gets charged from Northern Natural Gas. They're our transmission company. They have pumps along the line and it pumps the gas to us, so they charge us for that.
The way Bill Lindley explained that to me is we had to buy a hole in the pipe.
Well, and, uh, one of the.
Costs you so much money.
Right. There's not much you can do about it.
No.
That is what it is, uh. Now, the, the storage that we have is basically the same thing, it's a hole in the ground. It's a abandoned salt mine. And, uh, what they do is they pump gas into it. And then when we need it, they pump it out. Well, what he told me was they buy daily, they buy monthly and they buy yearly their gas. And so, gas goes up and down obviously during the seasons, well, whenever they get the cheapest gas, they pump it into the storage. And then that'd be in the summertime, then in the wintertime, when the gas goes up, they take some out of the storage, so they average it out. So we don't have big peaks and valleys at our, in our gas prices. So, to be able to tell exactly what that saves us in money, I don't know if we can do that, but personally, I think it's, I think it's well worth the, the, we have four thousand therms of storage and it costs us six thousand dollars a year to store it.
As you say, we have a spot, same thing.
Costs us a buck fifty a therm.
That's what I remember.
Not a therm, my deck of therms.
That's about right.
Yeah, so it's, it's reasonably cheap for us to store the gas. Um.
I know that when we committed to that storage, we had to wait, uh, several years.
Yeah, a couple of years or something.
Before we could ever get any storage.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's something that we want to give up, honestly, I think that's, I think that's well worth our, our money spent to, uh.
Well, I thought we had a bigger hole than four thousand, I thought we had.
It was relatively small when we got it, I remember that.
It's four, it's four thousand decathermes is what that is. So it'd be forty thousand.
Okay, yeah.
Forty thousand thermes.
Yeah.
Okay, so the way we bill then, um, if you guys look at this, this sheet here, this is how we, we bill W I E. Uh, we basically charge them for everything we get charged, uh, for the demand. See those transport fees from N N G, that's demand. Black Hills is, is basically demand, they do service for us. Uh, but then at the bottom there, the thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars, that's our transport, uh, fee. And the way that's figured is, um, the first twenty thousand thermes, we get thirty cents on. The next thirty-five thousand thermes, we get fifteen cents on. And then whatever's left after that, we get five cents on.
Is it the first twenty thousand?
First twenty thousand.
Is, is thirty cents?
Thirty cents.
And then the next thirty thousand or what?
Thirty-five thousand, next thirty-five thousand is fifteen cents. And then.
What's left over is a nickel, you said?
Whatever's left over is a nickel. And nobody gets past that other than W I E, obviously. Cookies gets a little past the twenty thousand, uh, during the winter. So basically, if we're selling to a residential customer, we're getting thirty cents. W I E is, is probably closer to nine or ten cents when you average it out.
Yeah, this is how you bill W I E, now what about our customer here, you got these?
Okay, good, good question, Ray. If you guys look on the, the first sheet I was talking about and you look in the bottom right-hand corner, there's a number that says rate per C C F. It's a bold.
Yeah.
Everybody see it?
Yeah.
See that point seven nine six two?
Okay, okay, okay.
We take that number and, uh, this is monthly, we take that number and we add the, the thirty cents to it. And if you look down just a little bit, you see one oh nine six two. We add the thirty cents to it, we add the fifteen cents to it and the five cents to it and then, uh.
And how did they arrive with that number, I see these other numbers up above there that. If I add them together, they don't come up that.
Look at the demand cost.
Yeah.
And if you look at the bottom there, it says three point four seven four seven.
Yeah, three, yeah, three point four seven four seven.
That's per therm or per, uh, M M B T U.
But by, I said, if I add those all together, I got fourteen or something.
Yeah, but that's a total, a total M M B T U, that's seventy-nine, six, seven, seven dollars nine six one seven cents and then that's rounded to a therm.
Yeah.
Which is.
Seven nine six two, seven, seven.
Yeah, it's rounded off.
Yeah, okay, I see what that.
Oh, I see what you're saying now, yeah, yeah.
Right, the seven nine, the seven point nine six one two is total per, uh, decatherm. Or million B T U. So, yeah, then you divide that by ten and that's where you get your therm price and that's what we charge on. So we get, we get one of these sheets each, each month, so our gas rate changes every month.
That's because the cost of gas is up and down.
Right, right.
And our storage fees and all that kind of stuff.
Cause he, he buys daily and monthly and, um.
Weekly.
Yeah, I, I mean, he's buying all the time.
You know, I talked to him about this one time and I said, we charge thirty cents and he was going, wow, that's a lot, but we don't have a meter charge?
No.
We don't have any minimum charges?
No, he told, he told me the other day, I've talked to him about that too, John, and he said that he's got customers that charge a buck. And he's got customers that charge five or it'd be ten cents and, and fifty cents. So we're right in between that, you know, the, the people that are charging fifty cents are putting a lot of money back into their city, beautification type. And the guys that are charging ten cents aren't, aren't doing any of that, they're just taking that and, you know, making that money.
Some of them got meter charges or they have, uh.
Right.
A minimum charge or.
So he said, we're right in the middle, so, you know, pretty much right where we should be, I think.
But we don't have a meter charge, do we?
No.
No.
No minimum.
I see this, yeah.
Yeah, I must forgive that, the person just wants to, the recreational just is, not to pay for the meter when you're not using it, so.
Yeah.
Well, see, in the summer, they're not, they're not using gas, so there's no minimum charge or no meter charge.
And I should tell you too, we, I had two farmers come in here today and talk to me, they wanna hook up, they really are looking hard at hooking up. They've heard that you can save forty percent and actually now, I was told today that, uh, propane's contracting a dollar eighty-nine. So at that, it'd be, it'd be almost fifty percent for somebody to hook up.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta study, it costs us to go and hook up easily.
Here's exactly what I told those guys, both of them, I said, you know, we're definitely not gonna do it for free. But we're not gonna make, we're probably not gonna make you pay the whole, uh, whole hookup charge either. One of them, one of them was, uh, quirk, we'd have to run a, a line a whole mile, now, you know, we're not gonna pay for that.
Well, didn't we have something that we, we would furnish like one hundred feet or something like that?
Hundred, yeah, hundred and twenty-five feet now. We did that at Doug Stein Camps and, uh, now come to find out, that may not be right either. Because we, we, we hooked up a hundred and twenty-five feet of three-quarter inch pipe and he may need two inch. He's probably gonna do, he's probably gonna need two inch because of his dryer, so I don't know if that's the best way to go either. Well, that's another, that's another thing that we have to find out because, uh, that's the first thing that the guys at Black Hills Energy told me is if, if your system can't handle this, then it's not.
A lot more demand.
Cause you gotta, yeah.
But what they, what they do is if these guys do hook up to their dryers, we tell them right up front that it's, it's an interruptible service. So if it's a, a ten degree day and we need the gas down here, they're gonna get shut off. And they know that right up front and that's part of the deal, so.
How would it affect us on demand charge though? It gonna affect us all year long because I use it for two months?
Well, then we charge them that, just like we're doing W I E, you know, I mean.
That's a chunk of change.
There's, there's, there's a lot bigger demand out, cause they gotta have that pipeline, you gotta have that hole, you know, for so much gas.
And, and, you know, I guess I hadn't asked that question, but.
Isn't gonna be a time of year when we're in the city.
No, we're, we're not gonna be.
We'll be at our lows.
Yeah, and it, and you know, if they're interruptible, then the demand may not be as much.
Unless we get an early winter, that would be the only kicker. That would be the only kicker.
Wet corner in early winter.
Yeah.
See, that, that might, that might be beneficial to us cause we get a monthly.
Yeah, it has, yeah, it has.
Yeah, if we can get, yeah, if we can get them to dry in October and November.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't do anything with that, I would say. I thought we could, I thought we could change an agenda, but you can't.
Oh, yeah. We can amend the agenda, I should have done that at the beginning of this meeting. We can amend the agenda, I should've done that at the beginning of this meeting.
Well, these guys told me we couldn't.
It's gonna be posted.
I gotta figure it out, I'm, I'm, I got it written down, I'm gonna...
I thought you could amend the agenda to add it.
It's gonna be posted.
I'll figure that out, though, don't, we're not gonna worry about that, he didn't get it in here until late today anyway, so...
All right. Uh, are, are we all done with that, natural gas costs? You got any more questions for Chris?
Good job, Chris.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay. Mel, moving on, public forum, ladies first.
Do you need me to stand up, or am I able to...
Naturally, you have to stand up.
Naturally? I'm, I'm here, uh, representing the Economic Development Committee. We are trying to develop the community, trying to get on board, and we are, um, full throttle on the Wal, City of Wall Lake website. Um, I don't know for sure who is kind of doing that, when I went on it tonight, I'm just somebody that's not on the internet, but when I went on it tonight, I see the minutes are updated on your city council meetings, so somebody is obviously kind of updating it, but...
Michelle has been doing that.
Okay.
Has been doing that.
But there were other things that I went to, when I went to the Wall Lake library, which seemed to pop up right away, the first thing I read was, "Be creative, um, at your library this summer with the two thousand nine summer reading program." Um, my, our hayloft, I have not reported anybody that our hours have changed, the little docked pictures of the front of their building has been updated. Um, I think the last time maybe somebody even went around possibly to the buildings was after we had just started, the hayloft had taken it over, and that's been four years ago. Another one I thought of was the Lutheran churches updated the front of their building. Um, when I went to the event calendar, there's nothing on events. Um, and so, I, um, brainstormed, I actually did this about a day. I brainstormed with the help of the development meeting today on who is somebody that would have time to do that, somebody that has, um, possibly some resources, um, and I came up with, uh, Wayne Nissen. Um, I called Wayne Nissen, I asked him if he was interested. He'd done some computer work downtown at WIE, he actually was very upfront in telling me he really doesn't do webpages, um, so then I contacted Jeremy Wintle, I asked him, did he know anything about it, did he know any resources? Um, he said to me that this is already, um, in place, he thought it was some kind of program or something that could be shifted so that Wayne could just go right into this program and update certain things. Um, I didn't know for sure if this Rob Schuman had anything to do with it, I tried to contact him, I, I was not, um, contacted back.
He designed it.
Yeah, I think he set it up, yeah.
Okay, so, again, I didn't wanna step on, I wanted to contact him first, but it's my understanding that with his new company that he's kinda started up in Sexity, he doesn't really have the time for it either, so he's kinda started. So, my proposal is to you on, um, is that something that Wayne Nissen could help us out with, it would actually give him some hours, an opportunity to work, but again, it will be, um, for you guys to hash out on hours, pay, so forth.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, we, uh, we spent fifteen hundred dollars one time on a website, we spent four thousand dollars one time on a website, and we used to have this. You know, we, we need somebody to run it, but we've never had anybody to run it.
Well, a valid point that was brought up at the, uh, the new community, Community Development Committee now, is that if, if you're, uh, any kind of a person, whether you're young or old, the first thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go to the computer and I'm gonna look up the website for Lakeview, or I'm gonna look up the website for Wall Lake, and that's gonna, what's there at Wall Lake, it's supposed to be to bring them to Wall Lake.
Yeah, I, I don't think that that's a problem, the problem is us doing the work.
Yeah.
You know, it's always been the problem, us doing the work, we just can't ever find somebody to do it, so I don't have a problem with Wayne Nissen doing this, I think it's great, providing him do it.
And again, that would work, he, I know he has therapy from Monday, on Mondays and Thursdays, and so he said this would work for him too, you know, um, it's just probably contacting and trying to get him the information per se, but, I mean, a lot of it.
Yeah, who's gonna do that? You know, see, that's what, this always dead ends at somewhere.
Yeah, you can have him, but you don't give him your information, he does nothing.
Yeah, it always dead ends somewhere, and we've just never been able to make that tie to the website, the information to the website. And we've created it, we've, I had somebody call me last year and say, "Well, the two thousand eight Farm Festival dates are on there." What's the dates of the Farm Festival? You know, and I said, "Well, I'm sorry, you know, we've tried to pass it off on this person, that person, and this hasn't happened." So, yeah, I, I think it'd be great if the Community Development could set it up, yes.
It's a problem that you can't get the information to the person who needs to put the information onto the website?
We don't.
That's part of it.
Yeah, we, we have a break in, we have the information and we have the website, and we don't have any connection, we don't have one person that's willing to do that, we don't have, we've never made that bridge.
Some of the information, and like Doc's brought, some, Wayne's not gonna go out and take a picture of it, you know?
True.
You know, you gotta ask somebody to do it.
True.
And that's information that wasn't relayed to the person that's supposed to do it, if there was somebody to do it, but we don't really have anybody to do it, so it's, it's... And Robin Corbin has got a lot of the information. You just gotta ask, uh, get out there that he's available, that's...
But, uh... And I'm, and I'm, I'm not going up and down here, I'm, I'm saying, I jumped on board today, and, you know, there's information on there, um, you can win there, and it'll tell you businesses, religion, it's, it's on the webpage, I'm just saying that, you know, it will be an opportunity to try and...
Yeah, it just needs to be...
And I'm not saying it's gonna be perfect, but I mean, it, it would be good to have today, Farm Festival's events that will be coming up next month, and that would be something that he could possibly put in.
Well, that's part of this person, would, you'd have to contact each individual organization, you know, get a...
Have that on the calendar.
Those organizations are gonna have to...
We've tried those, you know, we've tried that before, you know, is to have that, each organization bring their information, but then it breaks down who they're gonna give it to, you know? If, if he can, you have the city council's blessing in setting this up, if you can get it done, and I don't know what we'll have to spend again, but like I said, we spent fifteen hundred dollars one time, we spent four thousand dollars one time, we've gotten this far, but we still don't have the connection.
Um, again, um, I'm, I'm thinking that it's not going to be a hairy scary job, because for me, I'm not gonna be changing my, I'm not putting my manual on, I'm not going to do that, because it changes so daily, but my hours need to change right now, whereas a school event, if he could get ahold of the school year for the next school year and get that all put in there, that would be in there for people to see, City of Wall Lake, "Oh, there's a softball game in there tonight." So, I mean, it's not gonna be every business that's gonna have to contact, but, um, well, you know, right now, guys, I, I work, I'd like to try and head this up and work with Wayne and see if we can't, um...
Great.
Move and roll.
So, should we put that on the agenda for next meeting?
Yes.
It's gonna be written by then, yep.
Good.
Rock and roll.
Good.
You've just gotta get that one person that's smart enough to get it done.
Mr. Marsh?
I got actually two issues, I'd kinda like to get your guys' inputs on, one of them's been a parking issue that I have dealt with since I have moved to town. And the other one is, I'd like to know the city's noise ordinance. Because my next-door neighbor in his race cars, the way he runs them, the way he's run, uh, working on them disrupts my kids, they cannot go to sleep at night, and when they come over there working on these cars, they park wherever they feel they want to in this alley. And I cannot get, as of right now, I cannot get my truck out of my yard unless I back down into my yard, pull out sideways, and bypass his trailer. And it's clearly marked on the sign at the end of the alley, no parking in alley, I have talked to the local, the Lakeview Police Department about these parking issues, and they do not seem to do anything about it. And I just kinda like to know what we could get done to eliminate this problem. See, and as you can see by that one, I cannot even get out, I gotta back up and go around that trailer.
I think we cluster, we cluster.
And he doesn't respond when you talk to him?
He does not seem to care.
Okay.
Now, I mean, it's, we told him, I said, "Parking in there," I said, "We need to be able to get in and out," and I said, "We cannot get in and out when you park your race car trailers in the alley." He said, "Well, that's hooked up to my garage, that's part of my driveway." And I was sitting there thinking, "Your driveway goes in front of our lot?" And he doesn't, he has no, does not seem to bother him in it. And the noise of the race cars, we cannot even sit outside and eat, have cookout with my kid at night when he's working on these cars, cause we cannot tolerate the noise.
I mean, trailers does he have?
Well, he's got one smaller one, and then this one, this longer one, as far as I know, does not even belong to him.
I think that's Carson's. I see the...
Damn.
They come over here and unloaded, and I saw them unloaded over here the other day.
And he's got another driveway that would be long enough for him to park that truck and trailer in there and get it out of the alley.
That's where worship house is.
That one picture that was taken at the back of my trailer, I was standing by my garage in my yard.
Oh, okay. It must be that one there.
Yeah, that one there, I was standing by my garage when I took that one. And as you can tell, it's gonna be, it's a real pain to get out there.
Is that your, is that your vehicle there, the black one?
Yeah, the black one with the trailer is mine, parked in clearly all the way in my yard. Actually, it's not really my yard, it's a gravel area that's in the back.
Well, I guess the first thing that can happen is, uh, we can have Chris contact him and see what his reaction is.
The biggest, the biggest complaint that we have at pretty much the whole neighborhood around there is the race car noise. We came home one night from Fort Dodge, it was eleven-thirty at night, the new family that just bought this one house back here was trying to sit outside at night, relax, enjoying the weather, and they could not do it because of his race cars at eleven-thirty at night. And if we call, we call Lakeview to come over and talk to him about it, he comes over there, stands there, and BS's with everybody's racing, and turns around and leaves. Five minutes later, he's right back at it again. And my kids' school starts, they got, I'm sending my kids to summer school to get some extra help, and that starts back up again Monday, and I send my kids to bed at eight o'clock on a school night. And then by eight-thirty, they're asleep. And that's not gonna happen with this. And my one daughter, she's on ADHD medication, and if she don't get a decent night's sleep, she's a regular pain in the butt the next day. And we try to get, get her a decent night's sleep, so she ain't so crabby the next day for the teachers. We've got a phone call one day from a school, and I said, "Linda's awful grouchy today and crabby, won't do her work, won't do this." And I says, "Well, she didn't get much of a night's sleep because of the neighbor and his race car." And she said, "I don't see how you tolerate it." And I said, "Well, it's becoming a royal pain in the butt."
We need to put a timer on it.
Cause I wasn't for sure what there was...
I think there is an ordinance on, on the books.
There is a noise ordinance.
There's an ordinance on the books. Exactly what it is and what time it is.
My wife had a copy of it, and we lost it, cause the gal that used to work for, in the office copied it off for, and we weren't for sure exactly what it was, cause I tried to find it for the night, and I could not find it.
Well, I'm sure there's one that Chris can look up and...
I'll find it.
Contact him and...
Cause it's, it's irritating.
Oh, I agree.
Cause his, his garage, I don't know how in the world it managed to get passed for the building codes and everything, but his garage is not farther from here, oh boy, to the other wall away from the back wall of my house. And I can, we can't sit in our computer room, we can't talk on the phone in there, cause we gotta leave that room, go someplace else and talk on the phone with him running his race cars.
Okay.
So, we could get something figured out, so I wasn't for sure what the noise ordinance was.
Yeah, I don't know what it is right now, you know, with Chris, I'm sure.
Why don't you, uh, why don't you, yeah, either, either stop back in and talk to Chris after Chris has had some time to research this and...
Okay. Yeah, give me, give me three or four days.
Okay.
Thursday or Friday, stop back in and...
Cause it's, I'm surprised he ain't working on it tonight.
Well, we have a city council meeting.
Well, he ain't, he ain't quite lost it. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't surprise me, it's mainly, they usually starts about seven o'clock at night, don't quit till sometimes ten, ten-thirty at night.
Okay.
So, that, that was the only question I had, is what, what we can, this is a real, a kind of a pain, but the race cars is worse. But I don't know what to do about this, because we've called the Lakeview cops over here, they don't do anything about it either. It seems like no matter what we call them for, they never get anything cut.
Well, I'll talk to him before you come in here, so, you come in here Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, and the funny thing about it is, is when I live, he knows when I go to, I work at racetracks, and he knows when I'm gone, and the next-door neighbors to me say, "You're no longer gone out of here, and they're filled up your backyard parking." He has no respect for his neighbors.
Okay.
So, if we could thank you guys for your time, if we could get something figured out about this and make the neighborhood a lot more peaceful.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Put that on your agenda to report to us next meeting on this.
Will do. Um, now, I got one, uh, you guys have all heard about the tree and the grass situation?
My haven't.
You haven't?
Mr. Ziggman and Mr. Label, they don't, they don't play well together.
You really need to get around, John.
I did, I, I have, yeah, I did, I thought it was something different.
So, uh, I talked to Dwayne the other day, and he told me he didn't wanna come to a council meeting. I told him I'd bring it up.
He needs to cut his grass.
He needs to cut his grass.
According to what he told me, uh, Friday, Chris, when I talked to him Friday?
Yep.
He promised me that he would have it cut before Monday night's meeting. I haven't drove up there tonight, it was not cut yesterday, I can tell you that for sure. Chris, have you drove up there today?
No. But I know it wasn't cut today, I talked, I talked to him at noon.
So...
Uh...
JR Label come to me Saturday morning, I didn't forget to tell you this, Saturday morning, and he said, "Is there an issue? Is there any way that we can have the Lakeview Police come over here?" And he's parking his lawn mower in front of JR's trailer, so that JR can't hook up to his trailer. So, JR took it, I guess this weekend, and swung it around with a chain, and the lawn mower's still sitting out in the cul-de-sac, or it still was, as far as I know. These two just don't play well together.
Well, I think just the whole deal, the bigs two just need to, I don't care what they do, get a lawyer, fight it out, this isn't a city problem.
I agree with you, Franny.
It's not our problem. Them two cannot get along, one says white, the other one says black, I don't care what we do, you know, it's gonna piss the other one off, so...
Yeah, and what they're trying to rectify is they're trying to get the city to jump both feet first into their problems.
They're not going to, I'd just say, "Play your little stupid games and get over it, and somebody will get tired of it."
Yep.
I would think you'd have to get tired of it.
So, when he doesn't mow his yard, then we send somebody up to mow it? Is that what we wanna do?
We have a city ordinance on grass mowing.
Yeah.
We don't have anything on trees, but we do...
He's not mowing his yard.
Beg pardon?
Actually...
I'll mow it.
Actually, I think he'll mow it before we do that, cause he doesn't want us to mow it.
Well, that's what you tell him, you get thirty, that's what it's worth to mow your yard.
Well, he thinks it's great, he, he paid the twenty-five dollars in a heartbeat, I think it should be. Twenty-five, it'll be a hundred. I, I'm thinking two-hundred, two-hundred and twenty-five dollars, because if it's that long.
Twenty-five dollars, you're sorry for somebody, punishing somebody.
Really is.
I live there. Somebody gets injured and can't mow their yard, and we have to do it for them, or whatever, you know, that's one thing, or like the kids in Iraq, whatever, don't care, doesn't.
But I, I think, I agree with Franny, I, I think we're just gonna have to get ahold of both of them and just tell them, listen, this is not a city problem, this is a neighbor problem, you two gotta go fight it out, however you gotta get it figured out, how to fight it out. But Dwayne Ziggman keeps coming back and screaming up and down that the City of Wall Lake, and this is.
Forced him, yeah, I know.
Before my time, forced him to cut his trees.
Oh, yeah.
Now, I don't know, is that, is that what was in it? I don't, Franny, I don't even know if you were on then yet.
Oh, yeah, I was on, but I don't remember, I haven't handled the trees enough, maybe something on there.
Oh, he pointed them out to me, here's where I had to cut, here's where the city made me cut, here's the tree where they made me cut, he pointed them all out to me and everything. Well, see, he's claiming it's that one out front, plus the one out, it's, the one out front, if you're looking at the house, it's the one right here to the.
The Evergreen?
No, it's right next to the Evergreen.
Oh, okay.
And then the other one he's complaining about is, is if you look up that Evergreen row, it's the one clear to the backyard. Destroyed his tree? Huh? Did it destroy his tree? No. Okay, then what's the problem? He says because the city made him trim it, he wants JR to trim his, and I keep walking away from him, and he don't like that, he's. I don't really wanna discuss it anymore, I'm with you, John.
Wait, I got, I got something, real quick, real quick. I just wanted to bring you up today on TIP, we had TIP being today.
Thanks, Mel.
And coloring for the main street, well, I'm just kidding, and the labor was ten thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-eight cents, and I think it's looking pretty nice, they got a lot, a little bit done today. And then we had, uh, Doc's had a sign thing for four hundred and one dollars, and the other thing I wanna bring up is, should we get started on plating that new addition, or, I mean, first thing we probably gotta do is plaid it, we have to figure out where we wanna put stuff.
Gotta figure out how we wanna divide those lots up.
Well, yeah, I think it's a first step, so maybe next meeting or the meeting after that, we should decide.
And the reason I say I think we should is because of what was said at the Community Development Meeting this afternoon, is Chris Rodman told me that he had two people come into his office, and they wanted to rent houses in the City of Wall Lake. Do you know there's not a house for rent in Wall Lake? There's not one house.
There's some for sale, but not, not there's anything.
Right.
There's not very many for sale either, honestly.
But if, if maybe if, maybe if Chuck would look at it, to build one of them duplexes on, on one of those lots, that he could rent out, I don't know if you guys wanna, interested in doing that or not, but. More interest in residential.
We wanna do like, like, we get triplexes.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to see.
We're involved in the renting, we don't have a renter here, so, you know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna, we don't wanna.
No, I don't think, we want the expense, but.
Yeah, had to be kicking out.
I did for six months. Yeah, I, we need to move ahead of that, yes.
I think, I, I agree with you, I agree, we need to.
I just wanted to bring that, cause we need to get platted, but we kinda need to decide well how we wanna lay it out. Yeah, they, they plated, but.
Last meeting you brought.
Yeah, get a hand, I just thought, I thought it should be, that's in my opinion, not our opinion.
Do we wanna have some professional do it for us then, or?
Well, you gotta get a platter.
You have to get a engineer, whoever wants to.
Cut off Seventh Street, or make it to the north, or, I did it, cause it's cheapest[1694.64]